Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Reciting over today's meeting, Barbara Lomas.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to call to order the February 15th, 2018 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Here.
Commissioner Bell?
Here.
Commissioner Coleman?
Here.
Commissioner Rudnick?
Commissioner Wade?
Here.
Thank you.
Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Looks like we have a pretty short meeting tonight, so here we go. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the city of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and more. When applications are received, the city Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will then present the facts about the project along with a recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will then approve on item, approve that item, or make a recommendation as appropriate. Our goal is to carefully consider each project and make a decision that will balance individual rights with public welfare and the general well-being of our community. Agenda item three is public statements. We'll now receive public statements. This is the time for anyone who wishes to address the commission on any matter not on the consent calendar public hearing portion of the agenda. If you're here on items 5A through 5C, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Not seeing anyone, will now move forward to consent calendar non-public hearing items. These agenda items typically involve housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require a public hearing. Andy, you had something to weigh in on?
Just one clarification for the record. The agenda item 4A says approval of the minutes for the February 1st, 2018, regular minutes. It's supposed to be meeting. We just wanted to make sure it was clear for the record.
Thank you. As we said, this is housekeeping part of the agenda. Does any commissioner wish to remove a consent calendar non-public hearing item for separate consideration? If not, may I have a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent calendar non-public hearing items?
May I make that recommendation?
That's Commissioner Bell. May I have a second?
I have a second.
Commissioner Coleman, and this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
And moving right along to agenda item five, consent calendar public hearings. The next agenda section includes public hearing items that are considered routine or non-controversial. These items have been reviewed by staff and are conditioned in accordance with the requirements of the municipal code. The community, actually, this is Ms. Aing, will now read each of the items on the consent calendar to ensure that the public has an understanding of all the items to be considered. If you'd like to speak on an item, please, please come forward after the items are read and ask that that item be removed for separate consideration. If no items are removed by a member of the public or a commissioner, the commission will vote on all items together in one motion without further comment. Ms. Aing?
Good evening, Planning Commission. Item 5A is a zone change 17-0161, and it is a proposal to change the zone from R1 to R1CH on approximately nine acres for an existing church located at 8801 South H Street. This is also the northwest corner of South H and McKee. Item 5B is an extension of time for vesting tentative track map 6645. It is a proposal to approve a three-year extension for development of a, of a single-family residential tract containing 128 lots on about 30 acres. And that is located at the, near the corner of Vineland Road and Panorama Drive in northeast Bakersfield. Item 5C is a comprehensive sign plan 17-0449, and it is a proposal for a comprehensive sign plan for the shopping center previously known as East Hills Mall and now known as City Lights. And staff is recommending approval on all these three items. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I will open the, all of the consent calendar public hearing items. Is there someone in the audience who wishes to speak on a consent calendar public hearing item? Not seeing anyone, does any commissioner wish to move a consent calendar public hearing item?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes. I'd like to have item 5C moved for some discussion.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? All right, then, at this time, the public hearing items on 5A and 5B are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent calendar public hearing items, incorporating all staff memoranda and revised staff recommendations, if any?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. That is Commissioner Kater, and I need a second.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Wade, thank you. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
All right, then, I lied. We are going to stay here for a little while longer, so we are now going to move on to agenda item six, public hearings. This, excuse me, it is now the time to hear consent calendar public hearing items removed from that portion of the agenda, which was agenda item 5C. Before we begin, I'd like to explain how each hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during the statement, but questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others in participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of speakers and presenting new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Ms. Aing, would you like to expand upon a staff report for us?
Excuse me, one minute, Madam Chairman. I just want to clarify that we'll be able to come back and vote on this item tonight?
I'll refer back to staff. If we come to consensus, my understanding...
I'm sorry, you wanted, I wasn't clear on what you were asking.
Well, I, I, I wanted it pulled off the consent calendar so that we can discuss it, but are we still able to vote and approve the staff recommendation tonight, or does it need to get rescheduled?
It doesn't need to get rescheduled, as long as the commissioners are satisfied with what was said.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Aing?
Good evening. This is a comprehensive sign plan 17-0449. It is for the East Hills Mall, formerly East Hills Mall Shopping Center, now known as City Lights. If the commission remembers back in 2017, the developers proposed remodeling and rehabilitating this shopping mall into more of an outdoor destination, commercial center. And as part of that redesign, they are proposing a comprehensive sign plan that is more integral to their architectural and theme of the project. In your staff report, there are a series of tables that summarize the changes that they are requesting, and essentially, they are requesting additional signage than what is allowed by our current sign ordinance. Those signs, those additional signs include additional pylon signs along Highway 178 and a pylon sign internal to the shopping center, wall signs that exceed the current sign ordinance requirements, approximately by 200 or 200 to 525 square feet of copy area, depending on the linear frontage of the particular tenant and square footage of that tenant's occupancy. And other signs that are included in this sign plan include additional monument signs along, I think it's Mallview Road and along Highway 178. Menu boards, special event signs, and promotional window signs are also covered under this comprehensive sign plan. Staff is recommending approval based on the size and nature of the uniqueness of this project, and staff is recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have already opened the public hearing, but I'm going to reiterate that the public hearing in this item is open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this project? If so, please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Roger McIntosh with McIntosh and Associates, and I'm representing Mark Chris and City Lights LLC, Mark Chris Investments LLC. I don't know what the questions might be, but to give you a little bit of overview, this is a comprehensive sign plan in which we are presenting to you our idea and, and actually tenants' requests for signage. We have several tenants lined up that are ready to sign leases, but without the appropriate visibility and signage, they are not interested in the project, frankly. I don't know if your question is the height of the sign, or the size of the sign, or the style of the sign, or the number of signs, but to give you an understanding of, of how we got to where we're at, we want to have good visibility along 178. And the only way to do that, if you drive that corridor, you'll see a lot of mature trees up and down that corridor, and the only way to get visible, visibility from 178 is to increase the height above what is allowed by the city. That's why we're asking for 75 feet along 178. If you've driven that corridor, you may or may not have seen the one sign that is out there. It's a pylon sign. It's about 35 feet tall, and if you've seen it, it's very hard to see. It's small. It doesn't really do, do justice for, for what we're trying to do. We, we need to have two locations for those pylon signs along 178, just because of the corridors that, that you can see visibility. And you'll see there, there's some pictures of, of the trees that are along the 178 corridor, and the visibility on, on the upper right, that is westbound, you see an opening in the trees there. As you're going eastbound on the upper left, you see that there's a lot of mature trees that frankly Caltrans would require us to get a permit to go in and, and cut those down or trim them back so we can get the visibility that we need. So that's why we're asking for the pylon signs and the height, and also the size. When you're driving 65 miles an hour down the freeway, it's kind of hard to read a small sign, so we need a large sign so that it doesn't distract from, from people. They know what's, what's there, and they know that they can take the next exit to get off and get to the center. Along Mallview Road, we're asking for pylon signs at strategic locations. There again, we want to have visibility. Our tenants are requesting and requiring visibility and signage. We're asking for more monument signs as well. We anticipate that there will probably be, where are you, 30, up to 30 tenants?
Oh, at least.
30 or more tenants. So we need the, the pylon signs and the monument signs that will, that will let the public know where they're at and where they need to go to get to the, to the tenant spaces. The one pylon sign that we're asking for onsite is the theater marquee, and that is to be in front of the theater, whether it's in the middle of the site or off to the side. We need that at a high elevation so that you can see that sign over the businesses along Mallview Road, and, and you'll be able to see the marquee, see what the movies are, and, and that will attract people and, and get them into the center. I think Mr. Roach may have some other comments and insight as to what the tenant needs are, but that's an overview of, of the sign plan. We're asking for deviations, and otherwise, we wouldn't be here in front of you with this comprehensive sign plan. Thank you, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Good evening. I'm Vince Roach with Cushman and Wakefield Pacific, and I'm in the shopping center leasing, development, and sales business, and we're charged with bringing tenants to this, this project, and the, we're all familiar with the history of the East Hills Mall and the signage, if you've probably driven the project, the, really, the lack of signage that's there today. The project fronts, obviously, 178, but with the hills and the topography that's there, you don't get a really good view corridor into the project, but that is one of the great virtues of the, the property, is that it's adjacent to Highway 178. And then, of course, Mallview Road services the property to the south, but the property really can't be seen from Mount Vernon or Oswald, which are major east-west thoroughfare, or north, yeah, north-south thoroughfares. So the retailers that we're trying to attract are generally national retailers that want to be here, and they have identified the northeast trade area as a mature trade area that justifies looking at. But these retailers, of course, doing deals all over the state of California, and they want, in signage, what is their customary to them and what they're used to, to getting in terms of comprehensive sign programs, so they don't, they don't want less than what they're used to getting. And, and the previous project, the mall, didn't offer much signage at all. So it would be, I would say, nearly impossible for us to attract the retailers that we're hoping to bring without having signage that's consistent with the other regional major projects that are in the city, for example, the Northwest Promenade, or 99 in Panama, or Gosford Village, the Castle &amp; Cook Project. So we're simply looking for signage that's consistent with those major projects so that we can go to these national retailers and assure them that, you know, the signage that they're accustomed to receiving and having in other California suburban projects will be consistent here. So it will be tasteful, it will be done with great materials, and so on and so forth. And then I just open my, if, if there's any questions specific to me or directed to me, I'd be happy to try to answer those. But obviously, we're super excited about the project, and this is, it is a critical, critical piece. When we sit down with retailers, which we do all day, every day, and through conventions and on the phone, it's location, 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 which we've all heard that one, then it's signage, 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 along with parking, parking, parking. They just over and over and over. So it, it truly is one of the foundational building blocks to a good, quality retail project, which we are, we're close to bring, bringing to the city, and, but this is one of the, the key components of that. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Roger McIntosh, again, I just wanted to add that the site plan that you see has not been presented to the Planning Commission yet. That's because a lot of what is driving it is the tenant. And as we get tenants on board, we're continuing to develop the site plan, we'll be back in front of you with the site plan in the near future, but we can't get the tenants in without the assurance that we can get the signage that they're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Nope. Okay, we're going to move right along. Does any commissioner wish to ask questions? So I would imagine that would be, remember, this is the time not to express opinion, just for questions. Okay, Commissioner Coleman?
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. Can we put that, that page up that actually showed the, the signs? Not, not the pictures, the, the drawings, the, there those, that's fine. I'm just trying to understand, you have three elevations here, they're slightly different. Are these the ones that you anticipate to be on the 178? Side of the property?
Roger McIntosh, Commissioner Coleman, yes. It would be one of those three options, but they will be consistent.
In another sketch, there was one with a display feature on it, where you could do like a video display of some kind, that one there. Where do, where do you anticipate this one going? This is, I guess, theater pylon sign. Do you anticipate this also being visible from 178?
Unlikely.
Okay.
That will be on the front side of the, south side of the theater, whether it's in the middle of the property or off to the, to the west side. You probably won't be able to see that one from 178.
At 75 feet, that's like seven stories tall, so we're, are we gonna be able to see that from town?
You may not be able to read it, but it's a, it's a digital display.
I'm sorry, I, I...
I don't know the, I don't...
I confused you.
I don't know the line of sight from downtown.
I'm sorry, I confused you.
I'm trying to think about what that looks like, and I don't know that you will be able to see it from downtown. Maybe east Bakersfield, but not downtown.
Okay. But the digital display won't be visible from 178?
No.
Just the other signs that we talked about, it would just be an illuminated sign?
That's correct.
That just gives the names of the businesses that are...
That's correct.
Is that a 24-hour lighted sign typically? I'm sorry.
It will probably not be lit 24 hours. The theater's not going to be open 24 hours, probably just during the, the, the time that the, the businesses and the theater are open and operating.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have questions? Nobody, so we will... Oh, hold on. Commissioner Kater?
Hold on a while. We can ask staff questions as well, right? I just had a question about, you know, the applicant mentioned Northwest Promenade, Gosford Village, some of the other large regional centers in town, and I just wanted to verify that the, the signage that is present at those that have attracted the tenants that this project is hoping to attract, is the signage heights, were similar exemptions pursued for those projects? And is 75 feet a standard, for, a standard for a super, you know, a, a center that is beyond, you know, a neighborhood center?
Vice Chair, Kater, I don't believe they have a 75-foot tall sign at any of those shopping centers you mentioned, but I do believe they have comprehensive sign plans approved for them. They have different kinds of visibility than City Lights project.
Yes.
So staff is recommending approval of the City Lights proposal, because we believe it is adequate and, and provides assurances to the developer that they'll have enough signage for their tenants.
I think, what are your, let me see if I can help.
Thank you.
How tall is the Otter Mall sign?
I'm so sorry, I do not...
Oh, Jenny, thought you could do it. Roger, do you know how tall the Otter Mall sign is? All right. Is that what you're looking for, is just a...
Yeah, I think generally just a, you know, I think, well, I, I'm not going to tell you what I think, because now is not the time to say that.
No, you can't, but this is the question.
But the, I think distinguishing that if this is a request that's commonly asked for projects of this scale and caliber, then I think that's the question versus is this a special height because of special circumstances due to topographic and, you know, the age of trees and other features of the site?
Vice Chair, Kater, I believe your explanation fits this site. It is in kind of the rolling hill area of town, and it does have some barriers related to visibility.
I don't know.
Oh, I know what they look like, I just want to know how tall they are.
Roger, that was good.
Yeah?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight and a half is the, the consensus here? All right, any other questions from the commission? All right, we'll move right along to closing the public hearing, so we can hear everyone's opinion. We will now, I will now close the public hearing on this item and return it to the commission for comment, and I would probably look for Commissioner Coleman to comment, because since you're the one who pulled it off.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I understand the need for a, a sign plan for that project, because it does have a lack of signage now. And I, personally, I'm probably not too concerned about the signs that face Mallview Road. I'm concerned about the ones that face 178 and the, creating that same environment that we have down Highway 99 with the flashing neon signs and, not neon signs, but the digital signs that change messages and those kind of things. That's why I was inquiring about whether that was a display sign or if it was just an illuminated sign. And the 75 feet, I, I see the need for it because of the trees there, and I guess it's probably easier for us to approve a 75-foot sign than get Caltrans from the tree, so that's my, my reservation about it, is the exposure on 178.
So with that, I'll, I'll ask whoever can answer it. With what's before us, they cannot use those changing neon lights along 178? It can only be used in the internal sign? I'm, I'd like, yeah, I'm getting a, uh-huh, from Roger, but...
I'd ask the applicant that question, please.
Ah, there we go. Well, I mean, what restrictions? You've guys lined out the conditions. Because I saw, I saw Mr. McIntosh go like this, but, I mean, are conditions clear since that is that concern of Commissioner Coleman?
And while you're looking that up, can I ask Mr. McIntosh, across 178 right there, is there any residential there, or is that all commercial there? I'm trying to remember in my mind what's on the other side of 178 there.
Storage unit?
I believe it's mini storage across 178. There, there are some apartments to the northwest, at the northwest corner. If you go across to the northwest, there are some apartments, but the rest of it is mini storage to the north, and there is an assisted, I believe it's Columbus Estates it's called, I think it's an assisted living to the northeast.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, yeah, and the comment I wanted to make was about the height and the concern about, I mean, I think anything of, I think Commissioner Coleman mentioned a seven-story building, and I think we can all think about the seven-story buildings that exist in Bakersfield, and most of them, count them on one or two hands. And, you know, the impact that they have to the community, not just across the freeway, but, you know, the visibility of, and so I guess, I wonder if the applicant and staff had explored scenarios that, you know, I think putting it over the tree line is a way to make it visible, but it also becomes visible, then it becomes a dominant feature of northeast Bakersfield, and I, I wonder if that, you know, is the best kind of visual impact for, you know, what is beyond 170, people on 178, people that live in the university area or people that live to the south. I think the digital display on, like, within the property, I think, gives life to it, gives excitement. You know, it's kind of contained, but I think, just, I have a little bit of hesitation with something that will become, you know, the visible landmark of this, or, you know, has the potential to become seen from, you know, well beyond the reach of freeway access. And so, yeah, I guess, the question is the clearing, the option of clearing, the option of creating, you know, a location where signage is visible and at the eye level, is that, has that been... Has that been explored and exhausted, and there's not really an option? Does that make sense? Well, I mean, they talked about, you know, modifying, you know, the growth of trees or, you know, providing a clearing. And it seems like that would not create an icon in the same way that a 75-story pylon on a hill would, if that makes sense.
Well, let's see what Mr. McIntosh has to say.
If I could address that. There are some signs up and down the 178 corridor. This is a Carl's Jr. sign. It's, I would say, it's at least 50 to 60 feet tall. And you can see all the trees. You have a very small window to see that sign. And this is... You're already past the exit by the time you see the sign. So, you know, we're looking for something that's visible that will be seen over those trees. Because without the signage along 178, people don't know where to get off, when to get off. They don't even know that the center's there. So that's what we're looking for.
Commissioner Wade.
I'd like to make the comment that as of right now... I don't know if you guys have been to the East Hills Mall recently. It could only be described as a blight to East Bakersfield. I grew up there, going as a child there, shopping there. Agreed, we don't want anything that will be an eyesore, that will interfere with the quality of life of East Bakersfield. We don't want some thousand-foot sign that dominates the view from anywhere in East Bakersfield. On the other hand, we're talking about putting something there. We're talking about bringing commerce there. We're talking about bringing business there that will be a huge addition to East Bakersfield, particularly with the landscape, with the age of the trees, to put... To make an investment in that place, even if it's a little bit out of the guidelines of what the city's done by 10 feet, 20 feet beyond what Carl's Jr. does. We're talking about making a large investment in East Bakersfield. I'll take a little bit of light, particularly if it brings people there to shop there. We don't want to add anything that's going to hurt the quality of life of East Bakersfield. But what I see does not do that.
I don't have any lights in. And Missing's still researching just to make sure that we don't have that electronic sign on the freeway. Is there a way... I don't know who's controlling what's in front of us. Is there a way we can get the aerial up? Yeah, that one. Perfect. If we all look around, gentlemen, we've got commercial all the way around and the freeway in the middle. I'm not seeing a huge impact to people's quality of life. This, as you said, this project is... Needs to move forward. And with the topography that they're dealing with and the trees, a little taller sign makes total sense to me. We're not shining in anybody's back bedroom. So I am that much sensitive to those flashing signs while you're driving. They're kind of annoying. Makes me want to have a little seizure. But... And so I just would like clarification on is there any language in the conditions on those flashing signs? A regular identifying sign that's just lit? No problem with that. And that speaks to Commissioner Coman's concern, I think. Thank you. I see your point. Is there language, Mr. McIntosh?
Well, Roger McIntosh again. To answer that question, if you look on the plan, the site plan, the pylon signs are identified as FP1, FP2, and TP. The TP sign is the pylon sign for the theater. It's on the south side of the theater. That's the illuminated, or not the illuminated, but the digital sign that will show the movies that are showing at the theater at the time. You can't see that from the freeway.
Okay, it's just not living on the end of the freeway.
No. And we'd be okay with adding some language that if you want to make sure that that's in the conditions of approval, that's fine.
All right. How about that, Mr. Commissioner Coman?
Yeah, it's going to be fine.
You want to mic in? Turn your mic in. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just don't know how we go about that without, you know, delaying the developer at this point.
No, we're okay. They're talking. Watch. Andy's going to come up with something. Watch. He's magical. He can make this happen. Andy's writing it, and you're going to say it, Jenny?
I have information from the sign plan related to the illumination.
Okay.
The plans themselves show that it'll be internally lighted with LED lights, except for the theater identification name would be in open-channel red painted lights, exposed neon illumination with a clear acrylic face. So they're not describing any flashing lights. And everything is describing as internally illuminated.
Okay, but we're all... And I don't know if we're talking in the same terminology, that electronic lighting. And is that the correct term? That we can fashion something that says that'll be internally and not along, adjacent to the freeway?
Yeah, the one I think we're referring to is the one that says it's a digital display. Because to me, that means like the TV-looking thing where it changes and that kind of thing.
Well, that one is just... I mean, your site plan identifies that as just being at the central entrance to the movie theater on Malview Road, right? The internally lit ones are identified as the freeway-facing ones. So it's not really...
Yeah, the pylons along 178 could be internally lit, illuminated, or externally illuminated. So I wouldn't want to limit it. You know, you could have some downlights, which illuminates the outside of the sign. I think if you want to prohibit digital reader board along 178, that would be fine.
That's it. There we go. Thank you, Roger. We'll give staff a couple minutes to get some language.
Something like no digital reader board sign adjacent to 178?
You guys are okay with that? We're okay with it? Commissioner Coman?
I'm okay with it. The developer, okay with it?
Okay, thank you.
Chair Lomas, we've taken a vote, and we're okay with that.
Ah, that's awesome. I love democracy in action. All righty then. So do we have any other commissioner comments? Then I will look for a motion, and our wonderful attorney will help you out with it.
Well, you want to read the...
It'll just be a motion adopting staff's recommendation and adding the condition that digital reader board signs adjacent to State Route 178 are prohibited.
Since I started this, I'll go ahead and make that...
Make that motion?
Motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coman. May I have a second?
I can second that.
And that's Commissioner Kater. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Coman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
All righty then. Here we go. Communications, Missing.
No communications.
Any commissioner comments? Nothing? All right. We are adjourned. Thank you and good night.